Okay, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectment is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all open meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda material. Okay, with that, we'll rise for the Fledgled Legions.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have the joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees, the board. And we have the potential interview and appointment of a candidate to the Library Board of Trustees to fill a vacancy until May 16th, 2023, at the annual town election. And with that, we have the applicant here this evening, Stephen Redding of 10 Stone Street. And do you guys want to start off?
Well, did you want to do a roll call?
Absolutely.
I usually follow you.
Okay. You know what? Good call. I skipped right over that piece. All right, members, when I actually... Everyone present?
Present.
Present. Okay. With Ms. Roofley not being present this evening, we have a three-member board.
And just remember, when you do this, vote under the lights and roll call vote.
Yes.
Members, if I call your name, please remark if you're present. Suzette Dowd.
Present.
John Danilowicz.
Present.
Vera Corrine. Vera, are you present? Virtually.
Up there saying the meeting has no sound. We'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, apologies about those technical difficulties. You can resume.
Very good. We're just doing a roll call. If you're present, please say "here." Suzette Dowd.
Yeah.
John Danilowicz.
Present.
Vera Corrine.
Here.
Hi Vera. And Matt Toth wasn't unable to be here. I'm Mary Decorse, the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
My name is Stephen Redding, and I'm a fairly new resident here in Auburn. We moved here in the middle of last year from New Mexico. And we spent two years in New Mexico, and before that, we were in Massachusetts. Before that, we were in Baltham and Newton. Been basically there since 2002.
Okay.
Before that, I spent 22 years in Africa, living and working in Africa, mainly for international NGOs in a variety of roles, having to do with health, education, micro enterprise, refugee relief, things like that. I currently work for an NGO that's based in Watertown, Pathfinder International. And I've always been involved in the towns that I lived in, in different functions. This is the first time, though, that I'm looking at actually, you know, a role in town government. Before, it was always with advocacy committees or action committees for one or another thing. If a park needed to go up, I was there for that. Or, you know, if there was, you know, elections and things like that, I would help out. But yeah, I have always been a lover of books and reading. I used to, way back, this goes back to the 70s, I was, I worked in a library when I was in high school and college. So I have sort of field experience. And that was in California. I grew up in California. And I've always found a way to be involved with reading. When I was with a refugee relief organization, I set up the first libraries at a refugee camp in northern Kenya. And my basic question was, look, you guys have a literacy program, but they don't have anything to read around here, so why don't we set up a library? And so we did, and it was very successful. And it actually bloomed out into a virtual university course with a university in South Africa, so that students could get undergraduate work there, living in the refugee camp. So it was quite successful. And yeah, so I'm really excited to be here tonight, looking at this particular role. I also serve a role on the Auburn Cultural Council, Cultural Committee, Commission. Yeah, Commission. And I started that a few months ago, and I'm enjoying that role there. Find I have some time and want to get a little more involved. Awesome, awesome. Social efficacy seems lost these days, so I do appreciate that. Does the board have any questions?
I do not.
You do not? I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you so much for applying. I actually reached out via Facebook to get membership because we weren't getting applicants. And basically, I introduced our wonderful board and how enthusiastic we are about diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we had a nice conversation on the phone. Can you talk about, we're interested in inclusivity in reference to diverse groups, but also engaging our constituents. Can you speak to how you would utilize your background to kind of help us be more inclusive of membership of our community in library affairs and getting their opinions more than we actually do at this time?
Sure. As, you know, as my career and life show, I've always been, diversity has always been a part of my life, both professionally and personally. My wife is Brazilian, and she's Brazilian of African heritage. And my kids are all mixed. And so diversity is a very personal thing to me. And it's important, I think, you know, for all towns, but especially towns in areas that are suburbs to urban areas, to be able to understand the diversity that's right next to them, but also the diversity that's growing within them. And I see it on, you know, when I go out, I love to walk in town. I love to just, you know, take hour-long walks and that kind of thing. And I see the diversity that's happening in town, and, you know, that should be reflected. And so, you know, I look forward to, you know, talking about, you know, what we could do to make the library a center of community diversity, a center for bringing people, and especially children, together to show them the, you know, the diversity of their town and their region here. And so, yeah.
Thank you. I'm very impressed. Everything I was going to ask you, you've already answered, so I have no questions. Thank you.
Great, and thanks for stepping forward and volunteering. First question is, have you had an opportunity to watch any of our previous meetings online or through the community television? Okay. It might be something that'd be useful if you're selected to be on the board to get some of that background. When it comes to how boards function, my assumption is that you've had some experience in the past, either being on boards or working with boards. Can you give me your sense of what makes for a well-run board and how you would approach your role as a board member?
I think, you know, there are different kinds of boards. And I've worked in connection with the Board of my nonprofit, which is, it's an advisory board, it's a fundraising board, it's also an issue promotion and advocacy board. I look forward to understanding how the Board of Trustees of the library works here, because what its actual purpose is will dictate how it works. So I understand that, actually, full disclosure, I talked with Jean Collins before even applying.
A wise decision.
Yes. And she told me a little bit about how the board operates generally, that it's more of a promotion board and sometimes an advisory board, but not an executive board. And so, you know, that works right to my strengths because I work in advocacy and promotion, so.
Vera, did you have any questions for Mr. Redding? Vera Corrine, do you have any questions?
Hi, Joseph. My question is, what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the Board of Trustees?
Vera, could you repeat that? You were breaking up a little bit.
My apologies. I'll try again. What do you hope to accomplish as a member of the Board of Trustees?
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, that goes back to what we were talking about, about diversity. It's a very important point for me, and I would like to see that the library becomes that diverse place, and whatever I can do to help to make it that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions? I'm going to turn back to you, Chairperson.
Do we have any questions from the public? No? All right, anything in closing, or do you just jump right to the vote?
Just to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All right, I'll take my roll call vote first. Mr., so do you want to take a motion for the vote?
We need to take a motion first, yes. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Redding to a term to expire on May 16th, 2023.
That's like it. All right. All those in favor, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote.
I support that. Suzette Dowd.
Yes.
John Danilowicz.
Yes.
Vera Corrine.
Yeah.
Yes, and I vote yes. Thank you.
It is a vote. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll adjourn. No further matters, right? Well, that will adjourn the joint meeting. Thank you, guys. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. And with that, we have Patrick Automotive for a motor vehicle Class II and auto repair license at 519 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. Okay, and do we have the applicant here? All right, and do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So this is just an extension of an existing Class 1. We were informed that there were some changes in the licensing, and we needed to add a Class 2 and a repair to the existing Class 1 for our facility at 519 Washington Street. It's just an application process to fulfill the licensing requirements for the building.
Okay. All right, do board members have any questions? No? You got the materials in your packet showing DCG had no concerns, so with that, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to close the meeting.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Butters?
Oh, my apologies. All right, public comment, yes.
Um, over here? Yeah, he is. Mike Schillinger, 12 Diane Ave. So I'm basically directly across from Patrick Motors, have been there for 27 years. My concern isn't about licensing the dealership or the repairs or whatever. My concern is about the lighting that's being broadcast from Patrick's. There's several chunks of the zoning bylaws that deal with lighting, particularly, there's a section 7.2.2.5 about signage, supposed to be on a timer, seven-day timer, supposed to be turned off 30 minutes after the dealership closes. The blue Patrick sign stays on until 9 o'clock at night. The dealership closes at 7 most days of the week. The brand-new white Volvo illuminated sign is on basically from dusk until 5 o'clock in the morning, in obvious, what I read as a violation of zoning laws. I've got other issues with the current lighting that they have retrofitted there, that it broadcasts on the side of my house. I was there at the planning meeting some years ago.
That too.
And along with a fellow Butter who objected to being able to see the lights, I'm right across the street, and I can cast shadows on the side of my house. It wasn't offered that the lighting be cutoff lighting, as in some other sections of the zoning bylaws. Just wanted to have my say. One other thing, so long as the town manager is here, I have a street light directly opposite my house that illuminates the entire front of my house, since they've been upgraded to LED version. Who can I talk to about that, about getting some correction done to that?
Well, as far as the first issue goes, that would be the building inspector here in town, so that'd be reaching out to Caleb Moody. I do personally recall, I was on the board, Mr. Chambers was as well, we were on the planning board at that time. I do remember the concerns you had in that there was discussion that the lights not emit past the lot line or something to that effect. Not that you wouldn't be able to see them, obviously, because there is that difference which was discussed, but enforcement of that in terms of what plan was approved would be through Mr. Moody, is my understanding. All right. As to the second one, I do not know.
The second one, regarding the LED lights. So all of our LED lights are on a, we have a programmable system, so if you could call tomorrow and ask for Brooke Heltgren, she's our energy manager. Brooke, B-R-O-O-K-E, Heltgren, A-T-L-C-G-R-N.
Okay.
She is our energy manager, and you can let her know the address. She can look up the light, and we can talk with the police and DPW. If it's not going to be a public safety issue, we can dim the light to a certain degree.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. And my apologies, sir, on the public comment. These public meetings, these public hearings get me every time. All right, and with that, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there any further public comment? With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion and then we close.
Okay. All those, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have a motion?
Second motion on, well, the two separate, no, exactly. Right.
It's one. The auto repair would be considered one motion, right?
I believe they're looking for, there are two, let's say, two licenses, a motor vehicle two and an auto repair license, but you could do one motion.
We can take one motion for approving all three.
So I would make a motion that we approve Class 2 and the auto repair vehicle license for Patrick Automotive at 519 Washington Street. And just add to that motion that the manager follow up with the inspector about the lighting issue that the resident mentioned and get back.
Okay. With the standard language provided, that all the board comments. Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote. Thank you. I don't want to have the Mr. Cook sit here all night through the next hearing, so if we get a motion to move up 8A. Make a motion to move up Agenda Item 8A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right, so moving up to Agenda Item 8A.
Thank you. If we could invite up Matthew, he's our Eagle Scout who's here this evening, if you want to come up and sit at the table with us. So I just want to give the board a brief, and then I'll turn it to you if okay to give you a summary. So I just want to know that Matthew reached out to us to talk about installing a number of Bat Houses down near the Pappas complex. So we did have our DPW director, our, I believe, the CPW director, the highway director, and our animal control officer meet with Matthew and his family to just go over the locations, just to make sure that there was no concern about that over the type of mounting systems, and we are comfortable with what's being brought forth. So with that being said, I'm going to turn to you, and you can explain what the project actually is.
All righty. So like, my name is Matthew Cook. I'm almost an Eagle Scout, currently a Life Scout, and I was looking for the board's approval to move forward with my Eagle project. So with this Eagle project, I'm planning on building three Bat Houses that are evenly spaced out around Pappas recreational center. With these Bat Houses, they'll each be elevated 14 feet in the air using a metal pole, and then they'll be, there'll be, you dig into the ground and fill it up with cement and then put the pole in it so it's stable. The Bat Houses themselves are made out of cedar wood, so it's durable through most conditions, or weather conditions. And then they're spaced out around the Pappas recreational center, so.
Get some mosquitoes out of there in the summer?
Yes, yeah. The benefits of providing these Bat Houses with natural mosquitoes, no, natural mosquito repellent, instead of using pesticides, these could play a role in decreasing the mosquitoes population. Where we put the Bat Houses, or are planning to put the Bat Houses, is where mosquitoes are most active at Pappas. And then other benefits would be increasing Bat populations. In central Mass alone, there's nine Bat species, five of which are endangered, and those could help increase the numbers of endangered Bat species.
Any questions from the board?
We had some Bat Houses, were they up at Pappas, a previous Eagle Scout project?
Previously, we did have an Eagle Scout project that the board approved to install Bat Houses. I don't believe that that project ever went forward.
No comments? Time to leave, sir.
Again, we just looked at this from a safety perspective, as well as from the placement, and our animal control officer did a lot of research on it as well to determine what height that these should be placed at. And Matthew was kind enough with his family to say that they would be installing the poles and actually bringing the poles, so I think DPW would be helping out. And I think my only question was, as far as ongoing maintenance, if there were any issues with these in the future. I think, I know on the last time the board had this come before them, they were just concerned that over time, if something needed to be done, could they get in touch with you, and whether it was you or another Eagle Scout could come in and do any repairs that needed to be done.
Yeah, Troop 121 will be maintaining these. And then Bat, sorry, Bat Houses don't need much maintenance at all. The only reason would be if they get destroyed, which they shouldn't have since it's out of cedar wood.
And I see Joanna Paquin is also on the line, our DPW director. And Joanna, you're good with all of this as well?
Yes, good evening. We met with Matthew, we were buying locations, and I was a bit, and we also had reached out to Amy, the animal control officer, and she's comfortable with all of this, so.
Okay, thank you.
So we're good? All right, excellent. I think this is a great project, so thank you for the work you're doing. All right, do we have a motion, it's really to show support, I believe this falls into town manager approval.
It does. It would just be, if you would, you know, it does come under a town manager, but we've always brought Eagle Scout projects to you for a couple of reasons. One, it's nice to give the Eagle Scout the opportunity to speak to the board and let the public know what the project is, and we just want to make sure that you would be supportive of it. So a vote of support would be great.
Okay. So. Second. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Congratulations, Matt. And, Matt, do you have an Uncle Joe? Do you have an Uncle Joe?
I do.
You do? Tell him I said hello. He's all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, and moving on to, back to Agenda Item 5B, that is the continued public meeting on Whitney Street Home Builders LLC for a local initiative project for housing development at, located at 16 Perry Place. We have the...
So through the chair, I believe, the applicant is in the hall. I'll just go let him know.
Okay.
Jim Benicasa. Steve Benicasa.
Oh, you. Good, good. Okay, so we continued, the board members had needed to review final, or the concept plans that were given. I guess we'll start there. Do you have any questions from those plans?
So I don't know, again, the plans are very basic. I'm not super familiar with the process. This will bypass our typical planning, and you will end up going to the zoning. But as part of like the agreement, I don't know if you had mentioned a water connection and raising the road as improvements that you guys would be doing. Again, not going through the normal process, I feel like there's an opportunity to continue to benefit the community, and we don't have the traffic study, and again, the process is a little different. But I'd like to see if we can get some sort of insurances that mitigation would be like shared, whatever that mitigation is. I'd like to see, again, you don't have to, but, you know, the sidewalks on where you are improving the road and bring it up to pretty much what we currently do through the planning. I'd like to see, again, I know the plans are basic, but as you go through them, fencing and a physical barrier on the Butters on that side, I don't know the backside, I think it's still wooded back there, so I wouldn't necessarily expect on that backside of the plan, but I know on the Perry Place side, the Butters there, something to mitigate that or try to bring back some of that tranquility that they'll, a development would normally take away. So some sort of physical barrier would be something I'd like to see. You mentioned raising the road, so again, we're talking, there'll be runoff and mitigation that would be needed on that. Obviously, again, basic plans. I'd like to see some sort of an agreement in there that the runoff will not get increased and stormwater is maintained. And I'm not the expert on what that looks like, but like to see that in some sort of formal agreement. And again, the process is a little weird for me, but I think we'd like to see some of these things agreed upon as part of the application. agreed upon as part of the application. I would, I don't know the other board members, but, um, that way it truly is a joint application and not, we're going to do the minimum.
One other thing, gentlemen. Uh, we have a three-member board tonight, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Okay.
All, all, can I, may I speak? Um, all those comments that you made are all valid comments that we would expect to address, um, in a positive way. We don't see any of those as something that we wouldn't. Um, most of those things are things that the zoning board would be asking us or the peer review would be asking us. We, we have to adhere to all the stormwater regulations. And, uh, we, we plan on working with your planning board and/or your DPW as far as what road improvements we make. But those are things that are done down the road. Um, we typically, you know, unless you can tell us now what you want, uh, we would typically work that out with the ZBA and your other town department. So we're, we're fine with the comments that you made. Uh, I don't see anything here that, that we would say we're not doing that. Um, so what we're asking for is, is, is not for you to sign anything tonight, for you to just authorize a member of your board and/or whatever other people just to, to work out an agreement with us. So this is not the agreement. This is just the okay to agree, to agree to, to have another body. And, and so there's a give and take with this memorandum. And then there's some more give and take with the zoning board of appeals. So this is so early in the project process to, to, to be saying that, you know, we have to do this or we're not going to do that. It, it, it's typically not the right timing to do that. But again, I don't, I don't want to say that your comments aren't appropriate because they are. They are. They're all good, valid comments. And they're things that we definitely would be addressing through the process. So what we're asking for today is, is just to authorize someone in your board to sit down and, and work out an agreement. And you're not saying that they have to sign the agreement. You're saying you're giving them the authority that they can sign the agreement. And if they don't like what we propose, they won't sign the agreement. And if your zoning board of appeals doesn't like it, they won't approve it. So you're not giving us, you know, the, the, the chips today. We're not getting that.
No, it's, it is difficult for me to understand. This is the first process I've gone through and it seems backwards. So, um, I'm not going to let the opportunity go by, at least to express that. And whatever the actual process is, I'll let town administration and the lawyers tell us what that process is. But, um, again, I'm going to bring it up every opportunity just because that's how my mind works. Um, as far as the board, um, is it a member of the board? Or is it the chairman of the board that negotiates? It's the chairman. Okay.
So what we did in, in, in another town, so I, I sent Julie just a little while ago. We spoke briefly before the meeting, maybe an hour or so before the meeting. Um, in other towns, what they've, what they've done is, uh, we did a development agreement, which I just kind of would go to the comments that you made. And at that point, we could put that in the agreement to say that, you know, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. So then that assures you that we're doing that, you know, moving forward, going through the lit process, that that would, you know, we would have to meet all those things that we agreed to do. So I sent over a blank, um, development agreement. And I, like I said, I just sent it over probably an hour or four. So I'm not, probably haven't had too much of a chance to read it. Um, it's about five pages. But like Steve said, that's what we did in other towns was, yes, they, they appointed the chairperson to, um, to basically go through the agreement with the comments like that you just made and say, okay, we want to make sure that X, Y, and Z is, is done. That would then go in the agreement. Um, so like, you know, in this agreement, it's like page two basically spells out the developer is going to do X, Y, and Z of it.
There's a lot of negotiation. Uh, when, once the board, the board voted, like we're asking you now to vote to authorize someone to negotiate with us. And then there's, there's weeks and weeks of negotiation that goes on before we and the town agree to sign this. And then it goes back before the, the board.
I brought, I brought, there's a bunch of copies. There's about six copies right here. I don't know if you guys, if you want to just take a copy now, too.
We don't expect you to read it and digest that now.
Correct. I went through there and I just kind of blanked off and see where, you know, I took specifics off of names and whatnot of, of the other communities that we're working in.
So we, we were informed that, you know, that you don't have, you're, you're missing one member and we would need a majority. So, you know, what, um, I've done in other situations like this is just take a straw poll. So I'd go right down the line, start with Daniel, say, you know, if this was going to be for a vote, could you support that? Doesn't mean you're voting. Just means could you support it? Could you support it? Could you support it? And if, if it doesn't look like it's going to get unanimous to support, I would just withdraw and come back in two weeks. Or we withdraw and we go, continue, go in a different direction. So I, it's, it's perfectly legal to, to do a straw vote, um, to get a sense of if the board wants to move forward tonight or not.
And I think the straw vote of what he's asking for is basically just to get somebody to, you know, like the chairperson or something, that we could have a dialogue or even, you know, Julie Jacobs, that we would have to have a dialogue even, you know, outside of meetings, just to kind of streamline the process a little bit, just so that it's not once, you know, every two weeks coming in and then having to continue two weeks that we could just have like a dialogue. And then obviously, it would come back to you guys prior to it being signed, that everybody would agree. But I think that's what we were looking for, to hopefully.
And all the things we verbally agreed would be in this memorandum before you signed it.
Correct.
So if I can, I, after the last meeting, thank you for that. So you did send it to me. Unfortunately, I was in another meeting, so I did see it. Um, but I haven't had a chance to even open the document. So thank you for bringing this. Um, at the last meeting, a number of the residents expressed concern, valid concerns that how do we know what we're talking about with the developer is going to actually materialize unless there's something in writing? So Ed, myself and our town planner met with the state the other day just to verify the process. And I think it's important for everyone to understand the LIP process. So right now, the developer is coming before the board to seek their partnership on a joint application moving forward. They will have to provide a lot of information on this joint application, the LIP. The application is signed by the chair of the board and the town manager. If at any time when that application is developed, there's something in it that the town is uncomfortable with, doesn't like, the town is under no obligation to continue the process or to actually sign that. If everything is in it, as has been discussed and negotiated, then the town, uh, the board of selectmen can come back and authorize the chair to move forward and sign the agreement. So there are protections built in there. What we were saying, uh, last time, and certainly we said it to the state, the odd part of this whole process is it's after the LIP is submitted that the project goes to the zoning board of appeals. That's the law. That's the way the process runs. I think it's, it's probably not the best way to have a process such as this, quite honestly, but that is the law. So, but the town and the board of selectmen have the opportunity to see the LIP in advance. So I think what they're asking is what we would actually recommend to the board would be, i- if they're going to move forward. I don't know if they are tonight because they don't have a full contingency here, but if they move forward, you could take a vote conditional upon working out the final details, working out the development agreement that they're willing to sign that we weren't aware of until this evening. Uh, and also making sure that all the components of the LIP are as you expect them to be. If it's not as you expect them to be, even if you would have taken a conditional vote, you, you're not required to sign it. That doesn't get signed until you're comfortable with everything. And that's what you're referring to. I assume that we have a chance to all sit down, look at that application. Because if my name's going to be on it and the chair's name is going to be on it, we're going to make darn sure everything in there is something that we're comfortable with. So that is the process that, um, that is what the state outlined to us as well, reiterated to us that that is the process. That once you sign that document, that document should contain everything you feel comfortable with about the project. If there's something that was agreed upon and not in that, you, you don't need to go further or go back to the developer at that point.
So I know we mentioned that the chair is on there. Um, is town administration in these meetings as well? Um, developing this agreement? Is there anyone else? Is there department heads? Um, I don't know what that process looks like.
Internally, we would figure that out on the town administration side. Uh, we've already had, department heads have already reviewed the plans, so we already know what their comments are. But certainly before anything was finalized, we'd have them take a look at it if it was pertaining to their department.
And then could the select board get letters saying that they have reviewed that? And I just want to make sure they get.
I wouldn't sign it if it wasn't reviewed.
Correct, correct. And well, it'd have to come back for the board anyway. But that's what I'm saying is before it comes back, I mean, it's easier to sign off on something knowing the department heads have reviewed it.
I would give you that guarantee. I wouldn't have the, it's not part of the process to have the department heads because they technically wouldn't have the authority to do that anyway, um, to enter into an agreement. So I would be the one coming back and saying to you that we met, the department heads are comfortable with it and this is what we're going to go forward with.
And any areas they might not be comfortable with?
Oh, obviously, right. Those, we've already brought that up. But if, if those areas aren't addressed, then that would be the time that we'd have to raise it again.
I, I do know we had comments and through several meetings, the residents raised their issues. So, um, I don't know if there's a running list or something that we can at least reference. Um, so as we work through the agreement, we can say these items will be addressed. And again, it's.
Well, that would be the negotiation process with the, you know, myself and the chair, uh, to make sure that we address those. But yeah, we're, we're aware of what all the issues had that have been raised.
Yep. All right. Um, I will certainly take a look at the developer agreement, to this development agreement. Um, so essentially, statements in open meeting, development agreement, final approval of the LIP once it's filled. I assume you want to know to go forward with the LIP, especially because there's a lot of money involved before you start filling out this, this application here. So, um, yeah. If you want to know where people stand, I don't know where my fellow board members, how they feel about that. But I mean, I'm painfully, they know that I like to be direct with people and, you know, um, I, if I have a chance to make this project better and mitigate the, the certain aspects of the project and how it impacts the local community, uh, then I'm all for that. I understand, and I've said made it clear from day one that I understand that we don't really have any say when it comes to a forty B. So if I can work together with you guys to make this project a little bit better for the town residents, um, knowing that I can't deny it, I, I don't see, I don't see a downside to that. Just want to make sure that we're getting things that are of real value. I still have concerns that that water project is needed for you guys for the project and you doing it will bump the project up. So, yes, there's a benefit to the, the people in that district, you know, but, uh, you know, I'm not sold that it's the benefit that's being, that I'm being led to believe it is. Further, I do appreciate that, you know, the, the turnaround, the raising of the road. So I think we are getting a little bit more. Um, I think some other residents or some other selectmen have said they wanted more comparison to the Blaker Street project. Um, but it's a different project. So again, I understand, I understand that. You guys did seem pretty open to Mr. Chambers, so I thought he had some wonderful ideas in terms of, especially like the boundary, sharp rubbery or things like that. Um, one thing I, I was thinking he had mentioned to me is possibly a park, too, if you're going to have so many residents over there. I don't know what kind of time, or not time, but, uh, space requirements you have, but, um, you know, little things like that. I'm sorry, I, I missed that. What did you say? It's like a little, if there's kids, you know, if there's a lot of kids. Oh, a park? Yeah. You know. Playground. The playgrounds, there's something, something to that effect. Um, so that's, that's my comment. I don't know if the board members want to. But as far as a vote tonight, I do want Mr. Welfley here on a three-member board and I do want to review this development agreement.
Okay. Well, I purposefully not, I'm just like the other board members. Yeah, it's not my first forty B, so I'm not really unfamiliar with the process. What Mr. Chambers did, letting you know, is absolutely an appropriate part of this process. I would rather board members tell you what they want because how does the manager and the chair know? Because we're constrained by open meeting law. So I can't just call the chair anytime I want and say, by command. So it's very appropriate that Mr. Chambers share that in public session. And it's also this board's right to direct the manager to do something. That's what we're here for. So I don't think we've done anything inappropriate um, by having, uh, some discussions. I think Park is a wonderful idea. I'm not quite sure.
I purposely just spoke to Mr. Chambers. Mr. Chambers alone, he came to my house before tonight for this meeting and we specifically discussed it, knowing we were only discussing with one of the matters. So there was absolutely no violations of the open meeting law, if that's what you're alluding to, Mr. Chambers.
No, I'm not, Chairman. That's why we don't make assumptions. I've been here a little longer than you. I think I know what I'm saying. So don't assume that I'm accusing anybody of anything. I'm simply stating a fact. I cannot call you anytime I want to discuss an issue.
Understood.
That's all I said. I have no idea that you talked to Mr. Chambers. I don't have a drone over anybody's house trying to figure out who's talking to who. I'm not really worried about it. Um, if I can continue. So I think it's appropriate that we're having this discussion now. I think Park is a wonderful idea. I have no idea about the road. Obviously, with the weapons situation, you know, that can get tricky. Um, they are restricted in what they can, they can do. Um, but obviously, you can go to DEP and ask for different things that the local board can't do. So I'm on board with that laundry list. And, you know, I'm not necessarily thinking that the connection to the water is the great savior is the great savior that it's being presented as. It's a wonderful thing for us to be able to continue to develop, yes, but it's not essential to the Almond Water District to have that connection. So, you know, that thing is not something that we're trading here. That's not something, that's something you should do for your own, for your own benefit. It's not something that the town, per se, has benefit from. So, you know, I'm happy to, you know, give the chair some leeway in negotiating, but I'm not giving them a blank check. It's a four-member board, not a one-member board. So we want to make sure that whatever happens between you and the manager gets transparent, so the residents will know and the board members will know in a, in a decent period of time. I would suggest if board members have any sort of other things, that they email the manager directly and ask her to consider those, so that she can share them with the chair. But that's, that's all I have to say on, on the proposal. You know, it's not a great location for this. It's, it's a very difficult position, much like the Lake Street. Not an ideal situation to try and fit in 150 yards back, but that's a matter for the ZBA and the state to decide, not you to decide. So I'll leave it up to them. I trust them to make the right decision. But with that, I mean, if you're asking for a vote, I will vote in favor of it, because I think, to your point, Mr. Chairman, mitigation is important. That is something that, up until relatively recently, 40B did not allow. There was no negotiation. This is a relatively new process. This was trying to address some of the less attractive elements of 40B, which basically said, the folks can come in and do whatever they want, the town can't. Schools, we don't care. Infrastructure, we don't care. They tried to do this to make it easier for the town. Is it going to be an ideal situation for you? Absolutely not. But it's not something that this board has the ability to say no to. So I think mitigation will help. If you have ideas as to how you'd like to mitigate, please, you know, contact the town manager, put that into the mix, so that the, the chair and the manager will have a whole picture. But, you know, it's, I appreciate you all showing up over many meetings. It's, it's great to see a full house. We don't get that very often, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know how amenable it is, or if it provides benefits to people other than those that would live there, but I believe you guys mentioned 25% of the housing would be affordable. I didn't know if there was any room to increase that and have more affordability. I know it's a challenge. I don't know what the numbers look like for you guys, but if there was a way to increase that number and get more affordable housing, I think the majority of the community would be on board with something like that as well. And again, I'm okay allowing the process to move forward and have that negotiation, and I think like Mr. Carpenter said, if they come back and there are things in there that we don't necessarily agree to on, as a board, then I think that's where the process ends, but I think we do want to work with you.
Do you guys want to respond to anything, or do you want to, I know we have some public questions?
We'll respond to anything you want us to respond to.
Let's jump to Mr. Rogers.
Good evening, Board. You do know that we've, we've talked about the neighborhood and how it's going to affect this neighborhood. Rockland Road, Weatherhead, Highland, Pearl, Perry, Perry Place. Is it out of the boundaries for the neighborhood to appoint a liaison to work with you people? To sit in on the meetings, to have the neighborhood come to this person and that person sit in and discuss the, as well as what the board is wanting?
They should get their ideas to us. We don't
Yeah, you'd have to bring those concerns to the town administration, but I, I don't know the answer. I, I'm inclined to say no, but I do not know the answer if there's any, what kind of restrictions.
No, it's uncommon, or no, it's not possible?
Well, through the chair, I could, I would offer this. If you want to have a liaison speak to me and give me whatever things you'd like to see done, we can do that. We've never had residents sit in on meetings with the chair and the town manager as being the authorities to sign that, but we've always taken the input of the residents, always. So if there is anything additional that the residents are looking for, whether it's one resident contacting us or 100 residents, we want to hear your input, but sitting at the table is not done in a case like this. That's why we would be authorized to have the chair sit at the table and the town manager, but.
Because after the last meeting, there's been tons of comments and concerns above and beyond than what was heard at the last meeting. And there's three or four people that would like to speak tonight, and I know it's not going to really affect things, but it'll be, give something for these people, these developers to, to think about. They talked about raising the, the road two feet. The gentleman at number 11 Pearl Street, raises the road two feet, he's going to have a two-foot drop into his yard. And it's, raising the road two feet is going to cause massive flooding through the neighborhood. Massive flooding. So these are concerns that all the neighbors have talked about, and the neighbors have asked if somebody could be appointed to these meetings and this development.
They could certainly meet with Ms. Jacobson and myself, but I'm not prepared to commit to having somebody in the actual meetings with the developer at this point.
Okay.
But we certainly want to hear all comments and concerns, you know, and we've been writing them down. We've been listening to all the public comments. But again, it's just, I know we've said this a million times, but just the ripeness of a lot of these things, I mean, we don't know that there will be flooding. There could be flooding. We don't know where, which actual sections are, you know, I know they alluded to a little bit, but where they're, we're not raising the entirety of the road, it's just the lower section. So we're really jumping ahead a lot of steps when we, when we start making comments like that. And again, this is how we mitigate the, we're not trying to make it worse.
No, no, I know, I understand that, Mr. Chair, but I mean, raising the road two feet in any direction is going to have, you know, major impact.
Whether you have to, with stormwater drainage, I mean, all the calculations get done, you know, and when they do those things, again, not an engineer myself, but I know they don't do it to make things worse.
And, you know, I addressed some of your concerns. Traffic report, has it been brought to the, the town?
Through the chair, we, we did receive a traffic report. I've, I've, we received a preliminary traffic report. The final detailed traffic report gets done through the ZBA process, through the comprehensive permit. That's what gets reviewed by the peer review, meaning an engineer reviews that. We, we don't review it on behalf of the engineer. The engineer will do that. The preliminary one probably over the summer, we received. I'm going with it.
October. It's actually, it is a full report.
Yeah, excuse me, you just have to go through the chair, so. No, it's, I think I know what you're getting at. So we received a preliminary report internally. We asked for more information. The board asked for more information. We went back to the developer, asked for additional information on that. Developer gave us another updated plan in October. And, but the final traffic plan, it's generally done at the ZBA level, and we're not at that level yet. That will get done and get peer reviewed.
Yes, we actually did submit the final, the full report also, was in October.
But that will be going to, to peer review through the ZBA. So the peer review of the ZBA process is when the, the town's engineering firm, outside engineering firm, paid for by the developer, does a review of the plan on behalf of the town and goes through the entire report and makes any comments, makes any suggestions, and that back and forth takes place between the developer and the ZBA. It's not the board of selection.
Please speak, do you want me to speak anything more about the drainage, or are we all set with that?
If you'd like to.
It's up to you.
Yeah, yeah, you can.
So the, the, our drainage has to be done by a professional engineer. And that we're not allowed to increase the rate of flow off our site, as, as every, every project we build. That drainage report and plans are sent to your peer reviews, just like the traffic, so that you have two sets of engineers, you know, both paid for by us, and that would be done to alleviate the, the neighbors. All this information is also public information that's available to anyone to review also.
All right, so with that, are you guys seeking a continuance to get the full, the full four-member board, or?
It's up to you.
So if you think that the three are in favor of at least just signing to authorize somebody to start
We're just agreeing to go to the next step. You're not approving anything here. You're just agreeing to go to the next step. And if at any point, things don't go the way you want, you know,
Right.
we go, we go on our way.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, that's, that is correct. That's what I was mentioning in the beginning, that the next step of this process would be to at least sit down and start negotiating some additional things that the town may want to get. Taking a better look at the plan, looking at elevations, looking at the, anything that we want to look at or that we hear from the residents that they want us to look at. Then nothing would be done until that was hammered out in some kind of a draft form. We would bring that back to the board of selection, and at that point, you would see everything that we have in front of us. And you would not take a vote to finally sign it until you're comfortable doing that.
I could, I'd say that I, I believe that by going this process, the lip process, that the neighbors and the town will benefit more than if we go the other route. So I think it is in best interest of the town and us also. Obviously, we wouldn't be here if we didn't want to go this route. We think it's the right way to do it, and that's why we're here.
Mr. Chair, how are the neighbors benefiting from this?
Excuse me?
How are the neighbors benefiting from this?
He's took over the, no one will pick it up.
Sorry, Dan, the most
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
People can't hear online if
I, I apologize. He just said the neighbor's going to benefit from this. How, how are these neighborhoods going to benefit from this?
Nobody is sitting here saying, I, I understand the, the concerns that you guys have with the project overall. So if you're saying, because if a project goes up there, we're not benefiting, that's not the benefit that's being discussed. It's the mitigation benefits of the project is, is the benefit. So not to take him as literally on what he said, I mean, really what he meant was, you know, we're talking about mitigating, making this project a little bit better, so it will not affect these, the residents of Perry, Perry Street as much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
What I think that, that we could be held to a higher standard from the board than that we would be through the state. That's, that's my point.
Hi, if you could educate me, my question is on
Your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Charlene Ryan. I'm at 111 Boyce Street. You've all heard from me multiple times about the traffic on Rockland and the non-stop going on to Boys. So my concerns with this are also with the residents that live in that area, and I understand you've discussed that the traffic study comes in at a later position throughout this process, but it does not just directly affect the people that are on Perry Street. The cut through down Rockland is what's going to happen. Nobody's going to turn left to go to 290. They're going to go down Rockland, fly down Boys, and, and get on Off Hope Ave. So I'm wondering, within this process, at what point, when the traffic study does come in, you say it goes through a different department, it does not go through this, this committee, at what point can we speak to that?
Through the chair, so we do have a traffic study that anyone can request. We can actually put it up online and you can read it. I believe that the, there may be some additional information that's going to be asked of the developer on that traffic study just from our preliminary review, but we're not engineers. So the process that you're talking about is through the zoning board of appeals. So the process, the LIP process, if the board decides to go forward and do a joint LIP application, the, the developer has to fill out, it's a pretty large application. The last one that we participated in was probably, you know, an inch thick. There's a lot of information in that. That goes to the state. The state then goes through a process where they have to do a, get an appraisal, and they also have to do a 30-day comment period, notice period, to the town officials. So we have another 30 days to review the LIP and make sure there's nothing that we missed. If we go through that process, the, and if they get approved to move to the next step by the state, then they will get a letter from the state saying that they can go to the next step. That's the point that you're talking about. So the next step is that they would file a comprehensive permit with the zoning board of appeals. That's another public entity.
Okay.
All the meetings are public. There's time for public comment. There's time for, that's a back and forth process. It takes several months, so you'll have plenty of opportunity. Butters are notified when that happens, and at that point, you can speak to the traffic study, and it's especially important at that point, because once it's peer reviewed, then you'll hear the comments on it as well. So it's one thing to read it, but then it's another to have the, the firm that the town hires to look at it, make their comments as well. And that's something that I think the neighbors want to hear.
That's what I needed, was the time within what process to do that, because it, it, there is an outlier well beyond just that section.
Oh, absolutely.
As important as this is to the people who live right there. So thank you very much for answering that.
Any questions that you have on this, you know, please don't hesitate to call my office. We'll get you the information.
I'm in, has this 11 Pearl Street. I live on the corner of Pearl and Perry Place. And I'm just, my question is, they obviously have to widen the road. So my house is here, the wetlands are to my right, and the development is straight this way. How far are they going over, and which way are they going to widen the road? Are they taking property from me? Or are they going into the wetlands? Do we know this?
I actually have the board out there. I can grab it right there.
That's all I know.
But it just, basically, so the, the right of way was, I believe, 40 feet.
Let's go get the board and show it to them. While he's getting the board, I could just say that we, we, we don't have the authority to take anyone's property, not without an agreement. And as far as any wetlands, if we do fill any wetlands, it's only going to be with the approval of the conservation commission, and we're going to have to do replication, so there's a whole process that we would have to do if we do that route. As far as the roadway itself, we've got a preliminary plan, what we think is appropriate. That's going to be, if we do this lip, we're going to back before your DPW or your planning board, whoever you decide for us to work with on the road. So this is just a concept plan right now. It's got a long ways to go. It's just a start.
I think it's more appropriate, yeah.
Maybe after the meeting, just maybe address those concerns.
I apologize if it might have been stated in your last statement while I was writing my note, but where in the process does ZBA come in? Before our agreement, after, during?
After.
After.
So, again, so
We need to make sure the language that we agree to allows them for their recommendations and, and such, without knowing what they're going to recommend.
They still have to go to a comprehensive permit process, but before, I'm not sure I'm following your train, your train, but the LIP is filed with the state. The state then reviews it. If they approve of it, approve of the site, it's almost a project eligibility determination that the state makes. If they make a project eligibility determination, they will give the written notice to proceed to the developer to go the next step. Then the developer will file the comprehensive permit with the ZBA. Then the ZBA will start their review. There are certain things that they will have to review, and there are other things that, they're going to have to look at all of it, but not all of it will be able to be up to current zoning. For instance, certain height things may not be, certain buffer zones may not be, but they still have to, as I said, they have to follow all the wetlands regulations. They have to make sure that there's stormwater mitigations. So that takes place at the ZBA level. And those are all public meetings that anyone can attend and get notified on.
Should there be conflict between our agreement and what ZBA does, who supersedes what?
The developments, well, this development agreement and the LIP, we're really talking about, we wouldn't sign off until we approved it, and otherwise, it's just left to the items, you know, the teardrop or the, the water project, things of that nature, so we'd make sure those are included. I guess is your question is if they remove it post-LIP, post us signing, and in the ZBA?
In the ZBA process, yes, so.
They're two different processes. They're separate. So the LIP process is a process now where the board decides that you want to work with the developer to try to mitigate some of the impacts on the neighborhood as, as best as you can, and the best as the developer's willing to do. Once it goes to the ZBA, the ZBA is another whole process there, or they're reviewing a comprehensive permit. So the comprehensive permit is separate from this. It's a separate document. It's a separate application. The ZBA will, however, have access to and be provided with the agreement that the town has come to. So at least they'll be aware of what the board is looking for and what the developer agreed to.
One step further to that question, and again, I'll read through the entirety of the developer agreement, but I see that there's, you know, developers hold absolute discretion in case of obviously denial on the comprehensive permit, comprehensive permit process. Would we have any rights under a developer, this development agreement, if, to Mr. Chambers' point, things were included that wasn't the developer or the initial LIP submission?
So anything that would be in this agreement once it goes to the, the zoning board? I mean,
Yeah, I, yeah, let's just say you agreed to a park.
Yeah.
And then it gets to comprehensive permit stage, and you guys go, yeah, there's no park. I think that's in my
I think it's a breach of our contract, right? That would, then we would have to, yeah.
We might ask for a park, but it might not be allowed within that zone. And that's the thing, it's like, so if we're negotiating for a park, and then that's no longer allowed, who supersedes who? Is my question.
In that case, it would be the ZBA, because you're talking zoning. So the board of, the selection doesn't have authority to do anything outside of the existing bylaws. The only one that can do that is through the ZBA. So I think, wherever, the question came up before, but what we need to make clear on, most of what is going to be discussed, if not all of what ends up in your developer agreement, ends up in the LIP. We sign off on it. The state ultimately signs off on it. The developer still has to follow the approved LIP that the state has. They can't go completely off of it, because the state has approved it as submitted. So if the elements that you discuss here are in the LIP, and the LIP gets approved, that's the process and the plan that they need to follow. If the ZBA steps in and has any changes zoning related, that's different. The ZBA would supersede a zoning change.
Okay, and that's, I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds with that. And again, we're first in the process, so I don't, we can't share it until it gets there, then they'll have it. But I'm assuming everyone familiar with the zoning would know what our agreement is before it gets back before us, so there wouldn't be conflict. I'm couching this, because I
Zoning would get the agreement. Obviously, once we get to the zoning board, they would have your agreement of what you, what we all agreed.
When we get to that. No, it's a convoluted process, and that's my thing, is like, I would love to have zoning as part of the discussion, but it sounds like we can't, because government's weird like that. But I just want to make sure that anything that comes up, and I don't know how those discussions will go, that we're not in conflict with anything, is really, I'm, my concern, if we're going to go in and, and work and develop a comprehensive plan that is not going to meet certain requirements, and I don't expect the chair to be an expert on zoning.
Through the chair, the, the agreement likely would not have anything specific related to zoning and zoning bylaws, because we don't have that authority to do that. So the things that would be in the agreement would be other things, not how to get to them, but what you're seeking to get. And if it is something that is against zoning, and the zoning board of appeals or the conservation commission couldn't approve of it, then they are the authority on that. They're the regulatory authority. So we would make sure that the agreement didn't have anything in there that we thought was controversial. If it came up that it was, they're going to red flag, red flag that.
Generally, through the process, we're all experienced here to a certain degree. Well, you, you have staff, and you have counsel, and you have attorneys. We have the same. I don't think that between the two of us, that our professional staff would allow us to get into a situation where we've agreed to something that was going to go against zoning or something that we couldn't do down the road. So it's, it's a concern that if, if we're all acting completely outside of our realm, but I don't believe we're going to be doing that.
And we did just do, yeah, we did several upgrades to that, to the playground, new playgrounds.
That was just, that was used just as an example. And again, I, I don't know what conflicts we could end up with. I just want to make sure that it is addressed. And again, I'm not an expert in the process, so I will leave it to those. But just want to make sure that there's a remedy for anything that is maybe a potential conflict. And if we're negotiating something that may directly conflict with someone who supersedes our power, I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds, but still working to improve this project.
Another thing about the ZBA is we appoint them. So there could be some suggestion of coercion in that we appoint them as a board. So you don't, you wouldn't want them to feel as if the appointing authority wouldn't appoint them because they didn't agree with them. You know what I'm saying? So there's, there's other reasons why there are separations as well, you know?
We have one more public comment.
Name's Kevin German. I'm at 12 Pearl Street. Obviously, not in favor of this at all because of the scope of it not being, in our opinion, harmonious to the nature of the, of the neighborhood. You already know that. A quick question I have is, for example, my neighbor who was just up here, his, his driveway comes down to Perry Place, and the driveway is even with the road. So now the road is going to be raised two feet? How is that going to work on his driveway? Is it, is it going to be something he has to now drive up? Is it going to get stuck in his driveway every time? I don't know how the road can go two feet, and the driveways will not. And another thing about raising that two feet, that will make a dam. I mean, the rain comes down and usually goes across the water and out into the, into the marsh. But putting a two-foot barrier at the end of everyone's property is stopping all that water from continuing. It's just going to pile up and pile up, and it's going to go underneath. And it's going to be real havoc for everybody on that side. Probably not the other side because that's the marsh, you know, doesn't really matter. But I do want to applaud some of the people here who are taking a more cautious approach and, and asking a lot of questions, because we have a lot, a lot of questions. A lot of people can't make it, obviously, because of the weather and things like, like that. And other things have come up, and we're not done with our, our questions yet. We're not convinced. And we feel pretty much helpless that we don't have a voice in the whole process. And that's, that's a concern for everyone. We don't see any benefit for the people who live there. I don't know if any of you live there. Do any of you live on that road? No? Okay. Just wanted to know. But I did want to thank the, the members for, for letting us come up and talk, because you said, Julie, that it doesn't usually happen. So that, that's really great that you're letting us come up here and, and speak our mind and things like that. So thank you very much for that. But the concerns we have, I have, are genuine. And yeah, well, I'm just concerned, and I appreciate it.
Again, I can tell you that generally, these things will be looked at, at later stages of the project. And, you know, I can't speak to the developer, but my understanding would be that they'd be grading done, you know, just put a road up, and they're not going to have it so cars can't get out of their own driveway. And as, otherwise, you will have, you'll have many opportunities to, you know, you can reach out to the town administration. The zoning process will be a long process. You'll be able to have voice your concerns there. They have much more authority when you're talking about health and safety and impacts of the project than we do at this point. Again, we, we are really, we've, we've allowed the, the public comments, and we've even partaken in ourselves and kind of going beyond looking at this project at a larger scope. But we are really here tonight, in the past several meetings that we've had, about mitigation. And if we want to go forward based on the mitigation efforts to make this project more amenable to you guys, based on the fact that it is changing the characteristics, characteristics of your neighborhood. So again, we, we, we completely understand, and we don't want you to feel like you're up without a voice. But we do want to stick to within the parameters of what this hearing is about.
Thanks very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Right. So we would be looking to go towards developments agreements?
I think, I think, if I may, it sounds like the board would be taking a conditional vote to, a vote to proceed to entering into discussions with the developer, to see if we can, between the chair and myself and anyone from town administration that we need to bring into this, that we can come to some kind of agreement on a lot of the different issues that have been raised throughout all these meetings. And again, you can always send an email. I, I can tell you that the board of selectmen's gone out of their way on this, under the law. And I shouldn't criticize the law, but I'm going to. Under the law, for an LIP process, there's no requirement for a public hearing. But the board, there's no requirement to do that. And I, I think there should be a requirement for that, but there isn't. There is on the comprehensive permit side and the ZBA side. So the board and myself, we do want to hear you. That's what we're here for. We want to hear what you have to say. We want to hear your concerns. We want to incorporate that into whatever we can do. But understanding there are restrictions. And if we weren't doing the LIP process, just so you know, the alternative, the alternative is, the developer would have to file a project eligibility form with the state that's almost identical to this LIP application, has a lot of information. The state at that point would go through the process. We don't know which agency it would be. It would depend on which state agency is involved with the particular project. They would do the review and determine the project to be eligible to move forward. Then it would go right to the ZBA. So there would have been no opportunity for the town to sit there at all and say, well, what about this? What about that? Did you think of this? Could you, could you help us with this? There would have been no opportunity if they went a conventional 40B. So that's why it was important to at least have these public meetings to get the input of the, of the residents. I've spoken to many of you. Happy to continue to have that discussion. But I think what the board's looking to do tonight is to give the opportunity to actually start having some meaningful conversations where we can start to move it forward. Because you're coming out every couple of weeks, the developer's coming out, and we're not really moving the project forward. We're just kind of rehashing all the issues that we all agree on. And I can tell you personally, I, I agree with all of you, and I've said this to developer, to me, it's, it's not a good site at all for this. But that's not my authority, and it's not my choice. Because that is the, the site that they chose. We're just trying to make the best of it. And we want to have a good relationship with the developer because we want to hopefully have our voices heard in this process as well. And it would not be heard if it was a conventional 40B. So I, I want to thank the developer that they even gave us this opportunity because they didn't have to. And again, there is a benefit to them, no doubt. It's a benefit to them to go to the state and say, look, the town's on board with this. It, it helps them as well. But it helps us. And that's what the chair and all the members here are trying to say, that we're trying to do the best we can with whatever legal authority we have under the law. And it, it's an open, this is the open process part. This is the piece that the board really went out of their way to do this and have had several meetings. But I think it is important that we now move forward. I think we've heard a lot of your concerns. Please, again, send an email if you haven't, to myself or the chair, and we'll make sure that we raise it. But I think it's time that we actually start sitting down and saying, look, how are we going to handle this? What's this look like? What does the facade look like? Can you change that? And it's hard to do that when you have, you know, 50 people, because everyone's going to have their own opinion. So hopefully, you'll trust us from town administration standpoint. It's been reviewed by the fire chief, the police chief, the DPW director, the assistant DPW director, and our sewer commissioner. They, they've all done their review and raised the concerns that we need to continue to look at.
And I have tried to let you guys, you know, let your concerns be voiced. I, I know my, my friend and colleague over there, the civil procedure expert, Mr. Carpenter, I could feel his eyes on me when I let you guys speak at any time. We've kind of abandoned all that to make you, you want to come up and speak when it's salient. I've allowed that to happen. But we do have to keep this process moving forward, knowing that we're here on the limited purposes of what it's for. That we're not approving this project, and they're going to start building tomorrow. That's not how this works. So with that, do we want to move forward with, we want to go forward with the development agreement?
I, I think, I would suggest that you go forward with a vote to, yeah, have a conditional LIP, and let's get to the first step, to even see if we can have some meetings and sit down and, and move it along that way. Because we do want to review this agreement. You know, I think that addresses, from what I can see, and literally, I've looked at it for about 60 seconds, so I got to take a, got to dive into it. But I think if, if things are in there that we've all agreed on, when we agree on them, I think that will make the residents feel a little bit more confident. Because a lot of their comments from the last meeting were, how do you know we're going to get what you're saying we're going to get? Because at what point could that change? So at any point, if that did change, we don't have to sign the agreement. So I think that's a good step. I, I was glad to see that you have that in other communities. And, you know, I want to look at a little bit more myself. So.
So procedurally, would we go development agreement, then LIP?
I think they're kind of hand in hand, yes. But I think, let's work on the development agreement first, because that way we can work on what we want to agree that would be in the LIP. Then the LIP would be developed and incorporate everything in the development agreement. And I assume that's must-have you done the other time?
Yes. Yep.
We would be, we would be filing this agreement with our lip application to the state.
Yeah, a vote to allow us to start to negotiate and come back with a draft development agreement.
One more thing, if you will indulge me.
Yes.
Don't think that you haven't been heard. Just because we can't say yes or no, doesn't mean you haven't been heard. And I would say the same thing to the ZBA. Just because they can't say yes, doesn't mean they're not feeling you. They're not sharing your concerns. There are laws, this is a state law, where we have to follow it. It's not a great law. I don't think any of us love it. But just because we can't say yes to every concern that you have, doesn't mean that you don't feel your interaction and what's going to happen to your neighbors. We do. We know. We do care. We're not just up here thinking, hey, there's $400,000 on the table. Let's, let's crack. That's not anything that I've seen many of my members, fellow members do. So I just wanted to say that. I appreciate you coming out, and I hope coming out for the ZBA and share your thoughts there.
Okay. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter, we conditionally enter into an agreement to negotiate a development agreement. And we authorize the chair and the town manager to begin that process and bring those things back to us for final review and decision.
Might be semantics, but you said conditionally allow them to do that? So we're allowing them to work on their agreement?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're not approving the whole enchilada, same.
Correct. I just want to make sure that they, they're authorized to negotiate on, and work on a development agreement?
Yes.
Just, okay.
No ink gets on it until you approve.
No, and, no, and I just want to make sure that, because he said conditionally, that you guys are authorized on behalf to begin the process. So I would second that.
All right. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I just, just to be clear to Ed, on, on the town's end, because some people had asked about who was being involved, I absolutely, Ed and I have been involved in the process since the beginning. So was our town planner, our DPW director. As I mentioned, we've got a lot, our economic development coordinator, we've had everybody involved, and will continue to be. Because I think, you know, whether you know or not, but I'm retiring at the end of January. So there'll be a smooth transition, because Ed's going to be, has been appointed as the next town manager starting January 31st. So whatever meetings I'm in, Ed will be in, so you can rest assured, whatever. You, we've both heard together, will continue to be heard even after I'm not here, because Ed and I are on the same page and will be involved in the process together. So I just want to put that, you know, if any fears to rest, that, you know, if I'm leaving in two months, what happens to all of this? It continues. You know, it's, it will go on, and there'll be no loss of information because we've been in on all the conversations together from the beginning. So I assure you of that. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item seven, where I see we have no gift acceptances, no proclamations, recognitions. Agenda item eight A has already been addressed. So moving on to eight B, we have vote to accept and expend up to $50,000 from the Regional Economic Development Organization grant program for Route 12 slash 20 corridor corridor improvements. Commercial corridor improvements, excuse me.
Through the chair, yes. So Brooke Helgren is here. She's our economic development coordinator. If I may ask her to come up for a moment. And by the way, she did go out, when the gentleman was here earlier, talking about the lighting. She did go out and get business cards to come back, but he had left. So we'll, we'll make sure.
We'll follow up.
Yeah. So Brooke, we had the opportunity that was brought to us to apply for a grant, and the state held off on announcing when that date was. So we kept waiting for the date, waiting for the date. Then we were told last Tuesday that it was due last Friday. But we had already been working on it, so we couldn't get your approval to apply. But we were looking for your approval to accept and expend if we get it. So Brooke, do you want to explain what it is we're looking to do?
Yes. So this was an economic development grant on the Regional Economic Development Organization that we're partnering with is the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce. And the grant specifically is for quick turnaround projects on the Route 12 and Route 20 corridor, which were some of the points that were brought up in the rapid recovery plan in 2021, as well as the economic development plan and the wayfinding report from 2020. So it kind of compiles a couple of those projects that were suggested in those reports. And so the funding itself would be $50,000 for improvements to the Route 12 and 20 corridor, the veterans parks that are along that. So I worked with DPW to see what they needed for those veterans parks that are along those corridors, as well as some wayfinding signage. So as part of the wayfinding report that was in 2020, there were certain signs and designs that were approved. And this would help get some improvements over on Route 12 and 20.
Thank you. And do we have any questions from the board members?
Yes. Yep.
And the wayfinding through the chair as well. The wayfinding, that you were actually a member of the subcommittee for the wayfinding. So for those who don't know, the, the slogan that was adopted and the logo, it's a beautiful rendering of, of the spire of Town Hall, and it is embracing the past, launching into the future. And we actually have some flags that will be hopefully soon installed on our light fixtures, our decorative lighting with that logo, as well as some snowflakes. And we're going to keep changing those in Jury Square. But for this, we felt that it was important to give, oh, you do have.
Yeah, I do have a copy.
Just to give some attention to another area now of town. And this is an important business area. So to your point, and that was the rapid recovery grant that we had received. It focused on the 1220 corridor. So this is implementing some of the strategies within that that fit within the parameters of the grant. So the grant is trying to encourage business development. So signage is a great way to encourage business, business development. So we think we might have a good chance at it. It's a competitive grant. Brooke did a great job.
Thank you.
Is there a hat?
No. Yes.
Mr. Chambers, any questions?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke.
All right. Moving on, we have a request for ARPA funds for a sewer division SCADA upgrade project?
Yes, the SCADA system. So Nick Schwartz is our assistant DPW director slash sewer commissioner, wearing double hats. Hi, Nick.
Welcome, Mr. Schwartz.
Thanks. Thanks for patiently waiting for us to get there. So that, you have a, a pretty detailed memo on the SCADA system, but I'm going to turn to Nick to just give a quick summary. This is a really important piece. And again, just to go back to early discussions on what to do with ARPA funds. ARPA funds, even if we didn't vote to use them as revenue replacement, this would be ineligible category regardless, because it's infrastructure sewer. So it's something that we've been talking about getting, and we think that this is an opportune time to get it. So I'll turn to Nick.
Thank you very much. So the DPW sewer division, one of our priorities has been, since I started here over a year ago, actually came up in my. since I started here over a year ago, actually came up in my interview, was we have an aging SCADA system. What that is, is it's a supervisory system for our 12 pump stations in town. It allows us to remotely monitor the status of the pumps and equipment at those stations, as well as receive alarming at those stations. Because of the critical nature of wastewater pumping stations, anything that happens has to be responded to immediately. That system is aging and has been having a lot of technical difficulties over the past few years, is my understanding. Certainly since I've been here, we get a lot of false alarms, ghost alarms. We've been getting a lot of dropouts in radio communication. And it's caused a lot of difficulty for the sewer department to be able to respond to emergencies quickly. And it also causes us to get called in and have to pay a lot of additional overtime that's not needed. So over the past year, since I started working here, I have been looking into what the options are to replace the system or to upgrade it. And it turns out there are quite a few ways to go about doing this. So once I started digging into this a little bit, I noticed that all of the programmable logic controllers at these pump stations, and I don't know how much detail you guys know about this or have gone through the memo, but I'll try not to get too technical with it. These are sort of the brains of the pump stations. They control all the pumps. They do the sequencing. They allow the stations to sort of operate automatically. They are, most of them are sort of obsolete models of these PLCs. So looking at this, I said, okay, well, I know a lot of other towns who have the same model of PLCs, have been doing upgrade projects. And some of the options to replace the SCADA system also involves upgrading programmable logic controllers. So I looked at this as, okay, maybe this is one project. It's an opportunity to kind of do two birds with one stone and hopefully reduce costs and make sure the system runs well. So looking at a number of different options over the past year, we've sort of landed on one kind of, I guess, scheme as to how we want this to run. But once we got to that point, we realized, okay, this is, this is over a certain procurement threshold. We're going to have to potentially go out to bid or do a request for proposals. But we're pretty confident as to what the number, at least the bottom line number, might be, you know. So I think we have a handle on what the costs probably are. But ultimately, this is a project that we're intending to do. And recently, looking at this sort of ARPA lens, I said, okay, well, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to kind of alleviate some of that burden on the sewer rate payers. You know, if this is an eligible project, let's try to get that funding for this project. Because it's a project we're planning on doing either way. And this past year, sewer rates had gone up. As you guys know, costs are increasing in a lot of different areas. And sewers, no different. We want to try to approach the different capital projects in the sewer department in a way where we're minimizing the impact on rate payers as much as possible. And we've been looking at that in a number of other different areas as well. So the request is before you to approve the ARPA funding for this project. If I may. So I'm not sure about regional collaboratives. It's something I can definitely look into. The, the solution that we found, I was only able to identify one vendor that offers it. They are a reputable vendor, highly regarded in the wastewater industry, and we have a lot of their equipment already. But this is not something that we can sole source because of the cost of it. So that vendor is not on a state bid list for this. That's something I did ask. So because of that, we'll likely have to do this as a public bid or proposal process.
Life expectancy of this equipment?
That's a good question because the particular vendor that I spoke to, it's proprietary equipment, right? So typically, electronic equipment, you're looking at maybe a 20 to 30-year life expectancy. Things become obsolete very quickly in the technology realm. You know, when this system was installed, it was around, I think, 2000s or so. And we all know where technology's come from since then. So physically, how long it will last, it really depends on how long we'll take care of it. If there's going to be some other technological limitation that may cause a need for it to be upgraded differently, it's hard to say. But I think 20 years is an easy timeframe.
Just because you brought up rate payers, do we know what percentage of residents are on the sewer? Is it somewhere around 90% or so?
So it's funny you ask. I actually did want to look that up. And I just didn't get a chance to. But I did come across a grant proposal that our department, that the Sewer Division had written prior to my tenure here. And that grant proposal said that the number was around 80% of the town. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's the best number I have right now.
Benefits a large portion of the community, not just rate payers?
Right, yep. That is my understanding.
And through the chair, it benefits, correct, it also benefits the town from a financial perspective in that the overtime is a savings as well.
Thank you. And this life expectancy is in line with industry standard?
Yes.
Not there is much of an industry, you said, for it, so...
Right, yeah. A lot of this equipment is very variable. So, yes.
All right. Well, for me, this is right in line with the uses of ARPA that I wanted to see. All right. So that, do we have a motion?
Yeah, through the chair. I just wanted, Ed was going to just give you the updated number on where we are with ARPA funds.
So I read a report today. It looks like we have remaining in unobligated just over $3 million. So, all right.
Can I make a motion that we approve this up to $120,000?
120. That's correct.
I'll second that.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Nick.
All right, we have no table items. So going on to select board member items, we have discussion and vote of the select board for the date of the volunteer appreciation events, April 3, 2023, and for catering by Heritage Coffee Shop. Mr. Carpenter, the chairman?
So discussed that we, Mr. Page and Ed, we both said you're willing to be available.
Yes.
So that's great. So hopefully April 3, we don't get any, April 3 is scheduled on the 3rd, like we did here not too long ago.
I've already put it in my calendar.
And the Heritage has historically done this. And I and all of us who attended can agree that they do a phenomenal job. And it would be good to support a local business and give them a handout per se. So I'm just looking for the board's approval of those two things.
Mr. Chambers, any concerns, questions?
I support.
Okay. Do you want to do the motion, Mr. Chambers?
I'll make a motion that we approve the volunteer appreciation event for April 3, 2023, and also approve the caterer as Heritage Coffee Shop.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Mr. Chair, through Dan, would you like to have a start time, a specific start time?
It's usually, what they have, it's usually six.
I think it was at six. I believe so, yes.
Do I need to amend that?
Nope.
No, as long as we have, yes, okay. And do we have any edits needed to the minutes of November 14th? Okay. Sure. Uh, yeah, I mean, your concern on the minutes or just a separate matter?
No, it's...
Okay, okay. So moving on from the minutes.
I was just, you know, the ARPA funds and I'm concerned about weather-related issues that we have. And I know we've given an increase to the Auburn Youth and Finns, but I was going to ask the board to consider an additional payment to specifically for their energy fund. Because as you know, it's going to be a very difficult venture, and energy prices are going to be up. And it would be great if we could use some of this money to help those that support them.
So through the chair, we did do an amendment to their contract. So there were two tranches of funds that they received. The first was $60,000 for FY '22. And they were having trouble expending all of that money on the categories that they originally came to the board for. So we did a contract amendment and allowed them to put additional funds into the fuel fund because we felt that that's where it should go. Then when we just developed the FY '23 contract for the current year, we have to be careful because you can't overlap the two and get paid for the same thing twice technically. So we put additional funds into the fuel fund for the FY '23 as well. And recommended that for FY '24, assuming it's still going to be the same situation, they do that again. So at this point, I don't know that they need any additional funds because they haven't even expended the ones that we've given them. Certainly, if they come back and needed additional within their own contract, we could probably move some money around. If they need additional at that point, we can. But they haven't expended what they've been provided yet.
And that is the, really the main game in town right now. I know that a few years ago, Mr. Page, Mr. Westerman and Mr. Hammond transferred the money they had in their, they had a heating assistance funds that they did the spaghetti dinner for. They transferred that over to Auburn Youth. So I'm glad that we're able to keep that one going because you're right, it's going to be a tough year this year.
Yes. So right now, they have $120,000 to spend by July 30. And a good deal of that is in fuel. We put a line item in that said we're willing to make adjustments as needed, but we just have to make an amendment to the contract to do that. So our assumption is that they're going to spend down that money first. And then if they had additional money in other ways, we could add that. If they spend it all down and they're spending down the rest of their funds, then we can come back for another request for more. But at this point, I'd rather see them start expending what's been allocated.
What's already there.
I'm just concerned about the, the timing of it within their contract. Ed, do you have any, you've been monitoring that?
No, I, no, I have a point well made. And I believe that the food pantry budget was increased as well.
That was.
So two large needs out in the community, I think being addressed through AYFS. And we'll continue to monitor that. If there's an additional need that is not being met, then I think the point to consider an additional amount is, will be, will be well taken then.
We did also, on the contract, we amended the, well, not amended, when we did the second scope, we put some language in there. So it's not just fuel assistance. It was assistance because there could be, there were a couple of issues they had where somebody needed help with electrical, rental. So it covered a little bit broader spectrum of assistance that we wanted to give them that leeway to do that.
$120,000 will go pretty quick.
It will. We haven't seen it yet, though. I get updates on that and I just haven't seen it yet. But I share your concern. Right. All right. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So?
All those in favor? All right, it is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Let me see.